All right, I'll call this meeting to order. This is Town Council meeting on September 16th at 7:00. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Yes, sir. Evening. Councilmember Burchard.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Weirda.
Here.
And Councilmember Scafidi.
Present.
Mayor Green, you have a quorum of the council with all members present, with Councilman Larson calling in by phone because he's sick.
He's a little under the weather, so we didn't want him here, but we appreciate him calling in. For clarification, we need to adopt the agenda first, correct? Before we go into the public...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We will now go into the first public hearing for the Town of Alpine's minor subdivision replat of Alpine West 3rd Edition Lot Number 15. The hearing is now in session. First thing is, Madam Clerk, I need to confirm that all legal notices and requirements for this hearing have been met.
They have. It was met by the planning and zoning staff.
Okay. All the notifications of the hearing went up?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. So next, we will have the staff report, which sounds like our planning and zoning administrator will give us the report. Go ahead.
I'm not going to read the report verbatim since it was on there. I just have prepared a statement. For those of you that were here earlier, I apologize. It's the exact same one. So tonight, I'm here presenting for the Town of Alpine's request for a minor subdivision replat involving portions of lots 10, 11, and 12 in the Alpine West 2nd Edition. The purpose of this replat is to combine the parcels into a single larger lot, large enough to accommodate the Alpine Education Foundation's proposed public charter school. The new lot will provide access to Buffalo Drive with lot lines adjusted to better follow the existing geographical features. This project is directly consistent with the 2006 Alpine Master Plan, which identified Eastern Alpine West 2nd Edition, specifically these lots as a primary priority location for the future school facilities. The lots are zone public and community facilities, which supports the intended use. The zoning will not change on the new plat from the other plats before the lots. There are no anticipated impacts to wastewater or stormwater as a result of the replat. Procedurally, everything was met with the application and conforms to the Land Use Development Code. Any other concerns specifically will be addressed through the building construction permitting process. Notices were mailed to 40 nearby property owners, and public notice was published in the Star Valley Independent Town Hall and the Alpine Post Office. As of today, we've only received one formal response, and it has been attached to the agenda, and we can formally read it in during the public testimony portion of this hearing if you'd like. Based on these findings, I recommend approval of the minor subdivision replat as submitted. The action advances longstanding community priorities, maintains compliance with existing zoning while minimizing impacts on the surrounding properties. Field, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for the planning and zoning administrator regarding the staff report?
Questions on flow of traffic. Would that be Gina, or would that be...
Actually...
Or the applicant?
So, the applicant is willing to answer questions. Technically, the traffic survey has bearing on the lease specifications or conditions. But if you feel like you want to ask questions about that, then we could probably invite someone up to answer the questions. Hopefully, someone's here that could answer your question. Is that all on the staff report?
It is.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Now, we'll go right into the applicant presentation, excuse me. It sounds like you're going to be doing that as well?
That was it. That was both.
You just did the applicant presentation.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, do we have any other questions? Are you well-versed on the traffic study?
I'm not well-versed on the traffic study. I may be able to handle what the question is, though.
It wasn't anything major. A few people that live off of Buffalo Run, because traffic will go by their townhomes, and then people that live down, and now I'm going to forget, I think it's Snake River. They were just wondering, is exit and entrance only off Buffalo, or will there be any traffic that's viable via Elk Run?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Stay there. One more time.
Okay, so according to the plat map, it looks like all traffic in and out is off of Buffalo, which pulls traffic deeper into the neighborhood, where Elk Run was... I had assumed that we would be using Elk Run more because that's a closer distance to the highway.
I think we have someone here that can answer that question. Brett, do you think you can answer that for us?
I mean, I just want to clarify. Do we feel like that's part of the replat, or is it more of a special use?
It's probably more than a special use, but since you've asked the question all...
Yeah, that's fine.
Up to you.
Can you pull up... Let's see, yes. I think it's... This one is about, the packet was about 500 pages, but you have the link there, which is handy. So, traffic will be divided up between the two. So, as far as the proportion, that's a bit unknown. It's going to depend on the school policy for the way parents are directed in the morning, and say, what, 3:00 PM? But the traffic study, let's see, so it just goes right into it on page 2 and 3. These are the projections into 2032, year 2032. Based on current growth patterns, there's still no mitigations. A simple mitigation would be a stop sign, or a yield sign, or more complex would be a traffic light. But this demonstrates that the impact is minimal, is all I can say.
Okay.
Yes, please. Make sure you're on the, if you could give us your name, please. Thank you.
Meredith Leonard with the Alpine Education Foundation. So, yes, the intent is that we utilize Elk Run as much as possible. So, our school policy as of now will be to send parents that are dropping their children off into Elk Run, and then kind of looping around, and you can see the lines there to represent the cars stacked up. And then any parents that are going to park and then walk their kids into the school would use Buffalo Run, and then go in and park, and then leave via Elk Run. Yeah, the intent was to minimize the impact on Buffalo Run as much as possible.
I just have had people ask me.
Thank you for that. Is there any other, anything left on the application presentation? Okay, thank you. Now, we will move into public comment, and we are going to allow 20 minutes for public comment. And we're going to put a timer up here for three minutes. So, if you could keep your comments to three minutes, and keep in mind, there might be more...
And is this 20 minutes per...
Hearing.
Oh, per hearing, okay.
Yep, so this is the 20 minutes on the subdivision process, and then there'll be another 20 for the SUP. So, I have a timer for the overall 20 minutes, and then Sarah's going to keep the clock for the three minutes. So, if we're getting close to three minutes, I might give you a gentle reminder that you're getting close.
Okay, I'd like to, Mayor, I move to extend public comment on all of these public hearing items to 30 minutes and five minutes per speaker.
Okay, do you have a second? Hearing none, motion failed.
Okay, I appeal the ruling of the chair. It's okay. I just appealed the ruling of the chair.
No one spoke before. You appealed to who?
The ruling of the chair.
Okay, I don't know what that means.
So, it just means that the whole...
You don't know that...
It doesn't, we can't require a vote?
You didn't have a second on it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. There's three minutes per speaker. And I'll keep the time for 20 minutes. When we're getting close to 20 minutes, I will let you know when we're getting close. So, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, and all comments will be directed to me as the chairman. Go ahead, I'll start the 20 minutes.
Is this any public?
Any public comment? Thank you. Give us your name for the record.
Brett Bennett, Alpine Architectural Studio. Just wanted to reiterate that about 45 minutes ago, Planning and Zoning issued a recommendation for approval to this board for the replat. Once again, this is about the opportunity of a school in Alpine. I have members of the foundation here tonight, the Alpine Education Foundation, who can speak more in detail about that if needed. We have submitted hundreds of pages of documents to help support this case and have not found anything that would impact our project. The state and the town will provide comments to our submittal, and they'll be addressed as needed for life safety if they come up. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Now, we're in public comment, so I would suggest that, yeah, give someone else a chance.
Perfect.
If you're done, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Hi, Anessa Malnick. I live adjacent to the proposed replat. And I want to comment more just about the safety issues that might occur that I just hope go on everyone's plate when, once the school gets approved. Just the accessibility of students or anybody getting from that side of town to this side of town. There's no sidewalk that continues. There's no easy path for any kid to use to get through. So, they cut through private property, like totally fine. It's the safest route they can get there, so I understand. But, and I also want to know what kind of fences are going to be put up to make sure that we separate the properties, you know, the adjacent properties all along that area, especially if we have hundreds... I don't even know how many cars coming through, or how many children coming through, because we don't know numbers yet. But just making sure it's safely accessible just by everybody. So, just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment on the replat?
Hi, Megan Ramsey. I would like to say on the vote...
I would like to say on the vote, I saw that as a vote between the mayor and Shay Skafidi because we have two members up here who are very invested in this school, who should be recusing themselves. So, we're kind of compromised anyway on having any kind of democratic decision-making going on, which will be addressed, most certainly. However, how many schools have a gravel ramp going into a giant reservoir next to them? That entire area is just rife with issues. We've got the brewery, who have said they have a DUI problem from the opening to the closing. How many police officers do we have in the town who are patrolling that area? What is the safety and the, of the thickness of walls of these modular buildings that are twenty-five to thirty years old estimate, that have been moved three times and could be architecturally compromised? And you better believe that there was most certainly dissent in the last meeting, but we saved it for this, as far as this project even getting off the ground, which we intend that it does not. So, this area is completely unsound, this project should be reserved for its intended lot. That looked like a permanent structure that's to be built and I'm just struggling with how you're going to return this to the pile of dirt that you promised us. If you could talk about that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Tony Randolph. I'm an Alpine resident and I live right adjacent to the property. I just had a question about the replat. Does it go all the way extent to the property line of where the town homes are? And does the power utility line, does that factor in the, in the proposed property line?
Would you like me to answer?
Sure.
Okay. In this, hopefully, it doesn't take long, but the power lines are shown on the replat, on the plat map there. What was your first question?
How far does this proposed property go to? Does it go all the way to our property line?
It, I don't know where you live, but I'm assuming the condominium's just adjacent to it.
Mm-hmm.
So, it does go, this property does abut your property.
So, that includes the, the right of way where the utility line goes?
Yes.
So, you're going to have like a, I don't know, playground where the utility lines are? Is that where, is that the flight path is too?
I want to speak to the flight path because I don't know the specific.
Okay. I don't know, I'm, I just think it should be replatted, so it avoids that area.
Well, just to be clear, since there's an easement, nothing can be built there under the power lines, so.
Okay, but you're extending that, the school's property line all the way to our property line?
Well, it's already, we're combining lots, right? So, that property line has all, always been abutting your piece of property.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, we still have thirteen minutes and forty-five seconds left on the twenty-minute timer, just so you know. Any other public comment on this subdivision? Going once, going twice, we have a taker.
Haley Hines, Alpine resident. I did kind of want to circle back to what Councilwoman Skafidi said during Planning and Zoning, asking about the traffic study. She said there wasn't a time listed and that they're taking that and emulating it for the full year. And so, I do have some questions about that, living in the HOA that's adjacent to this proposed property.
Do you, do you live in which property?
Sorry, we live in Buffalo Sage, so across the way of Buffalo.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that all you have?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, that's it for public comment on this subdivision. Let's see, that's it for this. This portion of the hearing is closed at 7:19 PM. Next, we'll move right into the hearing for the special use permit. I'm now opening the public hearing for the special use permit for the Alpine Education Foundation at 7:19 PM. The hearing is now in session. I will ask the town clerk to confirm that all legal notice requirements for this hearing have been met.
That is correct. They were both met at the same time for both hearings.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have our staff report and you can actually move the agenda down, Sarah, since we're on the, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
My fault, I was looking at mine, sorry. I'll move my own down. Thank you.
Okay.
So, we'll go right into the staff report. Thank you, Gina.
Okay. Do you want me to actually read the staff report?
Do you have a summary of the staff report?
It, it's essentially, yes, the same thing as I read last time, so, we'll go ahead and do it.
Okay.
I'm presenting my findings regarding the Alpine Education Foundation's request for a special use permit to allow the placement of previously used modular classrooms, buildings on the newly proposed Lot 15 of the Alpine West subdivision. The project proposes four modular classrooms with structures connecting the units to serve as temporary public charter school site while permanent location is pursued. Under 3-207 of the Land Use Development Code, the relocation of buildings is prohibited and Section 4507 establishes overhang requirements that these structures do not meet. For this reason, a special use permit is required. The property is zoned public and community facilities and the proposed educational use is fully consistent with this designation. For procedural stamping, the application is complete, LFEs are paid, public notice was properly advertised and certified mailings were sent to approximately forty property owners. As of today, one written response was received. That response is included in the agenda packet and we can be, read it and read it and formally record it during the public testimony portion of this hearing if you'd like. To address concerns and ensure compliance, the applicant has submitted materials, including a site and utility plan, lighting and landscaping detail, and has initiated the fire marshal plan review. Project will also be subject to the Town of Alpine's building permit process where safety design and utility requirements will be further evaluated. In addition, a traffic study is required under the applicant's lease agreement with the town to address potential roadway impacts. This project ties directly back to the 2006 Alpine Master Plan, which recognizes this area as a priority location for school facilities. The use itself is consistent with the public and community facility zoning and all the procedural steps in the UDC have been satisfied. At this point, there is no wastewater or stormwater concerns. Any details, traffic-related, safety, wastewater, stormwater, design will be handled through the building permit process and the fire marshal's review. My recommendation is, based on these findings, that we approve the special use permit conditional on the applicant fulfilling the terms of the lease agreement with the Town of Alpine. So, allow the temporary setting of the charter school in alignment with community goals while ensuring continued oversight through the permit reviews and compliance with applicable codes.
Thank you. Any questions for Gina regarding the staff report? Hearing none, thank you, Gina. Next, we'll have the applicant presentation. I would imagine someone from the school would like to come up and make some comments. Not necessary, but if you'd like to, this is your opportunity. And please let us know if you want to bring up anything on the?
Brett Bennett, Alpine Architectural Studio, again. So, traffic keeps coming up. Anyone can initiate a traffic study, they're extremely expensive, they would not be stamped. These findings were not accurate. The fact that, is the primary concern safety from anyone concerned about traffic?
I mean, that, that has to be one of them, just because I pull out of there every morning and at seven roughly, and I've done it every, I mean, 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, the rush of traffic is, I mean, truly, just non-stop. So, it's just one of those things that I keep going back to is coming in and out, is it a safety issue sitting in the middle as people are merging headed to Jackson or departing, I'm less concerned with. It's more those turning left is where my, my concern. And then, really, we are a hugely, I guess I would say, walking neighborhood, so we have lots of neighborhood citizens, walking dogs, walking kids, pushing strollers down Buffalo Run. So, that's really where I'm coming from.
Okay, well, I think as many kids in the neighborhood should walk to school as possible. The, the safety concern in the study, no, it's one single accident that's required to be reported. If there was a problem, you would have ten or twenty accidents, you would have mitigations for turn lanes, traffic lights, all of this. I think this report completely dissolves the traffic concerns and that's why it was required to be done, to either support the concerns, it's based on data, it's an engineering report. And so, you don't know until it's done. And there is, it's very black and white in here, no mitigations, growth patterns, the roads that are now, there now can support significantly more traffic than what we have currently.
Yeah.
That's the reality of it. Couple other comments from the previous notes. Eric, I agree, the east lot line does not change at all in that neighborhood. The, we can pull up the, the plat or the site plan, either one. Okay, so that east lot line that runs approximately north-south does not change. It's, it's the division of the Child Development Center, the skate park and the ballpark lots. The easement remains intact. We've positioned the buildings in the play area to be outside of the easement and the power lines do not take up the entire easement. The manufacture dates on the buildings are not twenty-five, thirty years old. My records are more like 2019, 2015. The ADA ramp, future accessible ramp, if built, it's not, it's not part of this project right now, but if built, it has to be accessible. And that just means it can still be gravel, it can still be compacted road base, it just means that you can't go more than one inch per twelve slope and then you can't hit more than thirty inches of fall before you need a landing. So, it would terrace down, you have a requirement for handrails.
Are you talking about the ramp down to like the ball field?
Yeah, yeah, so that's, it's a note on the drawing, but it's not part of this project. We anticipate getting the buildings up first and then dealing with site amenities after the fact. But it seems like a, a smart thing to do, to have access down that bench. We've noted buffering on the south lot line, security fence can be placed around the lot if there's any concern. I mean, this is, at the end of the day, this is land ownership. We can put fencing around the lot, it may be needed for kids and security, but I do not imagine people freely passing through that property in the, in the same way they do now. Everything changes once you construct a, a project. Those are my notes for now.
So, the ramp to the ball?
Any other questions for Mr. Bennett? Go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
Oh, so, I wasn't aware that that was a ramp down to the ball field. So, would that then be a separate permit for that?
Probably.
Okay.
Down the road.
Since it's, would be a separate parcel.
Yes, for sure.
They would have to come to the town and get approval, for sure. And it likely had to be engineered, everything, but the, the school, this is their recommendation as a future project to give access down to the ball field. Any other questions for Mr. Bennett? Anything else the applicant would like to mention during this portion of the hearing?
Are we still on land division?
No.
Okay.
Now, now we're on the special use permit.
Okay, then, we bring this up? So, this is a rendering the foundation had done. It shows the buildings constructed in their original format, same way they were constructed in T-Town County, and using the existing building code to relocate them. I thought it was a great rendering that they had done and just wanted the room to see it.
Any questions regarding that? Thank you. Not at this point, thank you. Anything else you'd like to present before we move on?
Okay, go ahead.
Please give us your name.
Meredith Leonard with the Alpine Education Foundation. I think I just, most of all, wanted to say thank you and give an update. Since our lease was approved, we've made enormous progress. We've been raising money, we're capturing the imaginations of a lot of wonderful people that are interested in this school project. Parents are starting to get really excited and express enrollment, asking a lot of questions and it's really, really amazing to be able to provide them with more solid answers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Town Council regarding this part of the hearing?
I guess my, one of my questions that came up was, who came up with the platted subdivision?
So, that was Surveyor Sherbal.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, was that their suggestion on how to break these lots out? Because it just seems odd, we have a, a point nine-one acre lot. I, I don't know, I guess that, I mean, is that, that's, I understand to encompass the skate park, but it just seems like if we're working on a master plan, these lots seem somewhat odd to me, but that's.
We worked with Surveyor, excuse me, Surveyor Sherbal.
Surveyor Sherbal.
Yeah, someone else needs to take over here. Anyways, we, we worked with them because we didn't want to disturb the skate park. So, we made that its own lot that will, it will stay like that until something else major happens. Knowing that there was, you know, it kind of goes back to public comments I've made a long time ago, that there's already a school over there, there's already the Child Development Center. This, in my opinion, was kind of a, a good way to give them an opportunity to start small and they really don't have much room to grow from there because they're kind of cornered and they understand. So, any growth that happens from here is likely going to have to be someplace else. So, that was something that I pushed back on from the beginning. I think this is a good little corner and they've basically said they're happy to have it. Three point, whatever, three acres, they've proven that they can fit the buildings and forty-some-odd parking spots on there and a bunch of people, room for cars to be picking up kids. So, they've also met all the town requirements for snow storage and, you know, all the stormwater mitigation, all those things. So, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good plan that we came up with. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right. Yes, Mr. Larson, thank you.
Just a statement concerning access, sorry, one moment, concerning access from the condominiums to the skate park. I believe that still lies on Town of Alpine property, is that correct?
The skate park is on Town of Alpine property.
Correct. And then, also, just to remind the HOA of the, of the condos, that Alpine Trails and Pathways, I'm not sure, four years ago now, maybe five, received, applied for and was awarded a $5,000 grant from SCDU for exactly that, a placement of pathways and fencing for children access to playgrounds. So, that money is still available for that HOA. We've met with them. We've met with them four or five years ago, just that, to get their advice on constructing a fence. So they no longer have people parking or dropping kids off at the end. Excuse me, at the end of their drive.
So was the fence built?
No, it was never built. We left it in their hands to design, for a design and had never heard back. And then we postponed it when we were working on the the grant application with Wyoming. What is it, Wyoming Adventure Travel, the the $750,000 grant that we applied for and did not receive. And then where we did not receive that, then it was back to the drawing board for this. But that that money is still available and by all means be happy to meet with them again.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Okay, so now we're going to move on to public comment on the special use permit. Again, three minutes per person, twenty minutes total. I am flexible on twenty minutes. If we have a line of people that still want to come up and speak, I'll give you the option. I'm not, I would prefer not to be here all night, but I'm here, so we might as well take the comments. So we'll, again, three minutes per person and all your comments will be directed at me. There's no guarantee I'll either have the answer, but if you ask me a question, we're not going to pause the three minute clock. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that. So anyways, I'll open it up and when you come up, please give us your name. We don't have to have your exact location or address, but if you would tell us what part of town you live in, that'd be helpful.
Sue Colbus, Alpine resident. Good evening, council members, members of the public. The school is a good thing. I've been saying it, and you all know, on the record for quite some time. Something feels off about this whole thing for me personally, well, not just me, but a lot of people. I feel like this whole thing is being rushed at warp speed. I'm just, I want some things on the record. We've yet to see an enrollment study. And the lack of the enrollment study is baffling to me because if there's so many kids and so many families and everyone's all excited about it, that should have been done way back in June when you signed the lease. It would have taken twenty-four hours. I don't understand why we don't have that data. And if if you have it, I, this is, I'm going through to yesterday when I received the traffic study. So I'm a little confused. We are now in mid-September, so there's no enrollment study. We've been asking to show us the money. A group of us met at your home, Dave Jenkins, May second of twenty twenty-four. We were told the money was there, there's going to be a school, it won't cost the Alpine residents a dime. Well, there's no money. So that's through all of us. And at this point, you haven't fulfilled the requirements of the lease by providing the financials, the funding source and a complete business plan as well. Don't know when that's coming, but again, this lease was executed in June, we are now in September. Sixty-four percent of our property taxes goes to schools. This is adding money to all of us in this town. Money coming in from our taxes on top of the ADM, the average daily membership, is going to be $148,000 a year for a for-profit school. That's paying a dollar a year on a lease of public land. Now, I think tonight's decision for a special use permit is a cart, is the cart way ahead of the horse, personally. The most valuable land in North Lincoln County is where you want to put a charter school because it's free. Our forefathers, I get where they were coming from, but they didn't anticipate this kind of growth and they didn't have a master plan. So that statement is moot in 2025, also my opinion.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, being on the steering committee, I'm questioning the need of a charter school, especially when the town is in debt to the tune of over $3 million. The majority surveyed of, at thirty-two point five percent, strongly disagree with that a lack of a school in Alpine affects their daily life. This is from Cushing Terrell. The majority surveyed of thirty-eight point seven percent of people strongly disagree that they've considered leaving Alpine and moving somewhere else that has a school. The majority, the majority surveyed, thirty point one percent, strongly disagreed of the people they know that wanted to move to Alpine because it didn't have a school. Now, I'm not suggesting we don't need a school, I'm just suggesting that we might be looking at the wrong type of school since the numbers that Cushing Terrell gave us.
Your comments, Ms. Colbus?
The enrollment numbers that Cushing Terrell gave us for the county don't justify a K through four or even a K through six. We should be looking at public schools, waiting patiently to make that happen, in my opinion, and/or a trade school because forty-five percent of the residents are at college level. I have a lot more, I'll add that later. But I still am adamant that certain members of this council should recuse themselves from vote and I will touch upon that again when I have more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Haley Hines, Alpine resident. I am a teacher in the Jackson community and I drive there every day. I find it true that every child in this community matters and that strong schools benefit every resident, whether they have children or not. I am not someone who has a child and that was questioned one time, so I think that that's very important to say. I do hold a master's degree in educational leadership, so I could be a principal and run a school, maybe your school, one day if I chose to. What I will not support is putting kids in trailers as the town just approved, the planning and zoning committee just approved that recommendation to cater towards a charter board's needs. I can't support giving public land to a business without a teacher study, a student enrollment study or even clarity on curriculum. We were told that a school would be temporary in these trailers, but how can we be sure? There has been no trust built with the Alpine Charter Board or all of your boards that seem to get quite convoluted. When American Preparatory Academy was the contract, there was a full vetting process, there were forums, there were meetings, there was community input and the contract still failed. Why? I feel like that should be answered. There was still no transparency and I'm not sure a lot of people in the community even know that that contract was revoked and there's a new contract in place. Suddenly, there's a new contract without no vetting, no forums, no announcements. And from what I can tell, much of the town isn't even aware, like I said, without transparency, how can we, how can we trust that this is the right thing? Councilwoman Scafidi and Mayor Green, I implore you as stewards of this town to make the right decision and not approve the land for this school that's being rammed on our throats. Councilpeople Larson, Weirda and Berchard, I ask that you have ethics and recuse yourself from any decisions involving this due to all of your relations with all of the charter boards. Alpine deserves a school built on integrity and not shortcuts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Heather Goodrich, I want to start, I'm not going to address over here because he said to talk to you, but I do want to say to Meredith that I really respect what you're trying to do and I do not question your integrity or your motives at all. I think you're a mom trying to create a school. That being said, I have a lot of concerns. I am a curriculum and instruction expert. If you'd like my credentials, I can give them to you. My concerns are with Academica in that there's some major financial issues that I really think we should look into. And then secondly, with the Hillsdale College, I do have a prepared speech for that part. I want to share concerns about adopting Hillsdale College's curriculum. Hillsdale says the curriculum is patriotic imbalance, but critics have found serious problems. It echoes Christian moral frameworks blurring church-state separation. It downplays systemic racism and presents slavery as an isolated deviation. It gives limited space to women, Native Americans, immigrants and LGBTQ plus communities. Examples from the curriculum show this bias. Students are asked if civil rights laws blurred the lines between private conscience and government coercion, that is a direct quote from the curriculum, framing equality as a threat to business owners' rights. Martin Luther King Jr. is described as appealing only to individual conscience, ignoring his advocacy for civil rights legislation. Progressivism is portrayed as rejecting the Declaration of Independence, casting reforms like child labor laws and women's suffrage as departures from founding ideals. This isn't just political. Project 2025, a national conservative agenda praises Hillsdale as a model. Its goals include dismantling the Department of Education, ending diversity and equity programs and expanding vouchers for religious schools. Adopting Hillsdale's curriculum would align us with that partisan project. We must ask, how will slavery and racism be taught? As systemic injustices or isolated mistakes? How will marginalized voices be represented? Will parents have transparency? I believe in honest patriotism, one that includes all voices and prepares students to think critically. Hillsdale's curriculum risks silencing perspectives and embedding ideology in public schools. Let's choose an inclusive, accurate and nonpartisan path for our children. We can choose a different curriculum if we go with Academica. It's not required to be this curriculum and I strongly object above all else against this curriculum. And I think I want to end with, today is perfect square day. Just want to show you my T-shirt. Nine twelve, I'm sorry, nine sixteen twenty-five, we celebrated this all day at the middle school and it's a beautiful day.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
How's it going? Justin Scott, Alpine resident. I said I wasn't going to come up and say anything, but my daughter wanted to know what the mascot was going to be for the school and if any Alpine council member had any say, since you are giving away our land, if Alpine council had any say in what the mascot was going to be for this new school.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi there, Megan Ramsey. I'd like to read a quote. Public school teachers are trained in the dumbest parts of the dumbest colleges in the country. This is a quote by Larry Arnn, the president of Hillsdale College. They believe that anybody can be a teacher. Mayor Green, you appointed a educational committee composed of Shay and several people in this room and that was an official act that you did for Alpine. Now, you slowly took them away from the process and somehow we have a revolving cast of characters that is ever-changing depending on the financial incentive. We don't even know really who's involved at this point because it's always changing. We don't even know who's on the Secretary of State registration because I just asked, but if you look at the website, it says something else on the state page. So we really can't trust this group. We have a banker here who ushered in a fraudulent family and her husband here, who's been posting on Facebook for over a year about, you know, just wanting to see his kid and everybody wants to spend time with their kids. But what we're doing here is, we're getting very impassioned, but we're letting a group of people dictate and install a curriculum. And that needs to be examined before we even talk about the lease. They did not meet Monica's standards. I have the three or four-page letter from back in December that was given here. Jeremy Larson was listed on the registration for the Secretary of State and as Eric said to Emily in a prior meeting, it'd be a lot easier if you were here, Jeremy, but I'm glad you're on the phone. And you're not even watching a small child at home, you're just coughing into a tissue. So what we're doing here is, and I know you're disgusted, but the thing is, is we're disgusted too because you almost brought people in who allegedly defrauded about $10 million from Nevada and Utah taxpayers. And I would like to see the VIN numbers of the modulators and be able to take a look because when I look at the bill of sale for the modulators that Teton County bought, the other half of the modulators for the court system, it says otherwise. It says they're in disrepair. So I'm trying to understand how not only do we, we're violating our own town codes, but you know that these are some pretty, pardon me, shitty-conditioned buildings that are over there collecting condensation in Old Man Jenkins' lot. That's a better spot for a school. I think maybe we should just do the school there next to the airpark, but the airpark will sue you. So we have so many red flags, so many litigious events could be occurring. The Wyoming Education Association is pretty interested in what's going on right now. They have a lawsuit with the state right now because of Megan Degenfelder's pet project of vouchers. Megan spoke recently at Jackson Hole Classical Academy talking about the home and God.
Two minutes, can you please wrap up?
Thank you, yeah, I can count.
Thank you.
So.
Did you notice?
Thanks. I'm going to take my time back. So Degenfelder went and spoke at Jackson Hole Classical School, a private Christian school that Foster Freese, who I knew, brought into that community and I know how he did it and it was very contentious in Jackson, arguably as contentious as it is here. And what we're doing here is you're disenfranchising the people of Alpine and if we have something to say about it, we are asking for the time to speak about it. As you said, you'll stay here longer, we have a lot to say. So many people don't even know that this is happening and we would argue in, you know, legal terminology, that we can go to the Wyoming Charter Board and this should be revoked anyway. So they just bait and switched a new charter without even vetting it through the town with our money and we have people from, who do not live in the limits and pay taxes, who tell us to our faces that this is private information and we have no right to ask questions in this forum and they give us incorrect information.
Can you please wrap up?
I can, yes. So I have so much more to say and you'll hear all of it eventually.
Thank you. Okay, we still have six minutes left, but you're doing great. Thank you.
Hi, Anessa Malnick. I live in Alpine. I guess I haven't heard in this discussion and maybe I just missed it, is what happens if the school fails in within a year or two? Does everything stay here? Does it move off? I don't know, like what happens to the land? So that's something I noticed. And I agree with what Haley and a lot of folks up here said about how everything was switched. With the APA, we got to go ask questions and hear their presentations and we don't anymore. So with this new school, I don't even know the name of it, barely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on the special use permit? Going once, going twice. You have a question? Please come on up. Please state your name and where you live.
Troy Johnson, Alpine, I live here. Questions I have are, I mean, this is the, I don't know if I've just missed it, but this is like the first town council meeting on approval or a special use permit?
If I'm not mistaken, this is the first application for a special use permit through the town.
And it's, it's either approve or deny?
Correct, there could be approval with conditions?
I mean, I just wondered how come, I mean, it seems like we always get here and I'm not against the school, I'm just, it always seems like we always get one meeting and that's it to really voice our opinion or hear what has to be said and it's either pushed down our throat, we're going to have to pay more taxes or we're going to have to, you know, it's like our sewer plan, I understand we're going to probably raise our fees on that and our water. So how much are we going to get raised? How much is the school going to actually cost the town? Nothing's for free, no matter what anybody says. And to put the infrastructure in and all that, is there bathrooms? Is there cafeteria? Is there, I mean, there's a lot of questions just to have a school start showing up. And from what I understand, doing a, a school like this with the problems they've had, the people, the people that are supposedly going to run it, you know, they have problems. So the special use permit, does it entail full-on go, go build it or is it a?
So the special use permit, they, they've already put in an application for the construction, putting it all together and, you know, doing the roads and all that. That's totally separate from the special use permit. They have to get the special use permit before they can ever really be approved for a building permit.
Okay, so, and then is it twenty-five-year-old buildings?
I don't know.
Is that what it is and we're going to bring Jackson's junk down here or what?
I think that's a rumor and it's, the school could speak to that, but.
I mean, I remember a few, I don't know, probably twenty years ago, they started moving all houses in from Jackson. And some of them are doozies. I mean, they're pretty trashed and everything else. So I just am worried about the quality and the rush. It always seems we're in a rush to get this approved and I just wonder why that is. Last time that I was at a meeting for this, it was they had one. I was at a meeting for this, it was they had one day, that was their last day for the contract on the buildings or something. Apparently not, because they still got them. So, I'm just curious of the hurry. I mean, I think the public would like more input, myself. Thanks.
And I did request to spread this out, just so you know.
All right. Any other public comment on the special use permit? One minute and 40 seconds. Does anyone else have a public comment? Yeah, I did see that. It was cool, yeah.
Well, if the time's still available.
We have a minute twenty-one left? Yeah, if no one else has a comment, you can make a second comment.
Again, I really appreciate the effort, and I admire your, all of your passion. I guess, one of the questions I have is, like, I feel like this is solving a problem we don't have, in that we have a really good elementary school that all my friends whose kids go there love. I feel like the problem is secondary, and so I just wonder why are we not looking at a secondary model, like a magnet school, some kind of a STEM magnet school, where we don't have to, if you can choose, you're not shipping your kids, you know, all the way to Afton, when we do have like a really great elementary school nearby. That's one thing that I've just always kind of been confused about, is why are we not looking at secondary options? And also ones that don't marginalize half of the community with a particular religious and political bent.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a few seconds left in the 20 minutes. Okay, thank you.
Sue Colas, resident Alpine. I just want to say a couple things quickly. Forty-four point four percent of people surveyed love the Palisades the most about living down here. Forty-six point three people surveyed love our natural features. I'm sorry, but the concentration camp modulators do not fit that dynamic on amazing, expensive, public land. And based on all the stats, the K through four charter school doesn't make any sense. We could use a trade school. We could use a public school. This whole K through four, K through six thing, based on stats, doesn't make sense, just like what Heather said. I mean, we're all for school, but I'm beginning to wonder if this is the right school in the right place. I love the idea of having a trade school. That's actually what this town needs and what this county needs.
Thank you. That's 20 minutes. Is there any final comments? If you've already made a comment, this is not the time to do it. Okay, that wraps up our public comment portion. I'm now going to close the second hearing on the special use permit, and we'll go right into our regular meeting. Says consent agenda, yes, consent agenda is next. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We'll go right into reports next. Just wanted to make sure that everyone has seen the new welcome signs in the town of Alpine. There are three of them. If you haven't seen them yet, I have had people that said, "Oh, I haven't seen them yet." And anyways, coming out of the canyon on the right-hand side of the road, coming towards town, there's one, there's one coming from the south, kind of on this side of town, and then there's one coming from the Idaho Falls side. And if you haven't seen them yet, definitely go drive by them. But they're, just so everyone knows what they are, they're not a metal sign, they're a composite sign that's painted like metal, so it'll age over time. Hopefully, this lasts forever. The logs are something that, they don't have any structural support, they're just kind of bolted on, but the staff is going to, you know, put some more lacquer on them every year, every other year. So, hopefully, they keep the same character. But over time, the metal part will patina more, so I think it's going to look even better over time. So, really excited about that. And that's really all I had. I'll move on to events committee report. Did you have a report?
I do.
Okay.
On September 27th, the town has partnered with Melvin once again to put on a fall festival. This has been a great event for the town every year. We really enjoy working with Melvin on it. There's going to be pumpkins, base painting, games, and just a lot, lot of fun. So, if you're around that day, definitely go check it out.
Thank you. Looks like Kevin's not here, so the engineering report is online. Next is planning and zoning. Mo, did you have something? Okay, come on up.
Yeah, we had a fairly short meeting last week. Sorry, get my notes out, pardon me. We went over a couple of permits or site plans and a deck that had to be rebuilt, and that's about it. We're going to make some plans to go through our LUDC some more and have some special meetings, so to speak, and try to go through some of the hiccups that we're finding. Of course, it's a living document, it's always changing.
Any questions for Mo, while we've got her? All right, thanks, Mo. All right. Mr. Larson, if you're feeling up to it?
Yeah, I'll be real quick.
Okay.
So, economic development report, the county's economic development's kind of working with also the county's travel and tourism, and trying to get some projects going there. Alpine's travel and tourism. We believe we pretty much wrapped up all the grant applicant receivals for the summer, with the last one being the, well, I guess technically it'd be the welcome signs, but before that was the Reggae and the Rockies, which I understand was a great turnout, an exceptional event. The, we, one of our board members will be out of town, so we moved our fall board meeting to November, I believe it's November 6th. Let me confirm that. Yeah, November 6th, Thursday, November 6th. So, we look forward to the feedback from all the grant recipients on that November 6th meeting. And other than that, there'll be one other grant applicant going into the winter season for grooming.
Right.
Any questions there?
Have you made any progress on the groomer itself and finding one?
I've, I've, the original Mountain States out of Torrington, I've now left three messages with them and have not heard back. I'm planning on talking with my friends at Teton Valley Trails and Pathways, because they have a couple other resources that also leases out the snow rabbit. One other update, maybe, Mr. Mayor, you can update, is that YDOT did look at the railing, the guard railing between here and McCoy Creek, so we're limited to the eight feet.
Correct.
But I'm still working on that, yes.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Larson on Alpine Trails Tourism Board, anything like that?
I can further comment on the Reggae Festival.
Yeah.
It was amazing. It was a very, very good event, great for the town, well-attended, no issues. The property was left in perfect condition at the end, and we hope to do it, we hope that it can be pulled again, pulled together again next year.
Yeah, I heard the same. I was out of town at a volleyball tournament, not me personally, but my daughter. But, yeah, everything I've heard was it went off really, really well, and hopefully, this is the first of many to happen, and similar events like that. So, anyways. All right, moving on. Lincoln County Sheriff's Report was submitted in writing, and with that being said, we'll move right into action items. Let's see. Okay. First is the minor subdivision replat for the town of Alpine. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the town of Alpine's minor subdivision replat application.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Discussion. So, this is the actual, the meeting before was the hearing, that's where we kind of got testimony from, you know, the replat process and the applicant, and now this is the motion to approve the subdivision. So, if there's anyone that would like to make comments now, I will allow it. Same rules, three minutes. And if you've already, I would appreciate if you didn't like rehash what was already given as testimony in the previous hearing, but if you have anything, I'd be more than happy to hear your comments now. Same thing goes with a three-minute timer. So, please come on up.
Hi there, Megan Ramsey. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question that we're just trying to clear up. Are you receiving $1,800 a month for insurance for your family?
You know...
$21,600 a year from the town of Alpine?
Honestly, I'm not going to answer that. I don't need to at this point.
Right, because I think we know that the answer is yes. So, I'm just wondering, I've heard all kinds of chatter and rumors since Christine was fired, since Dawn was fired, about the atmosphere of the town and about the attitude of, you have kind of a bunch of sycophants around you who are, you know, basically two, three people who are in bed with the school, and there's been a lot of talk about people who are afraid of losing their jobs, and they're here to please you because their neck is on the chopping block. So, when we get these reports from, you know, besides Monica, from folks who work for you, it's really hard for the town to trust that they're coming from a place of honesty, especially when we get a report that says all of these line items were met. Well, absolutely, the traffic study, was there even a strip put across the road, and for how many hours and at what time? What kind of meaningful information has been presented to the town thus far that has not been, you know, manufactured for the purpose of pleasing you so that people can keep their jobs?
All right. Any other comments regarding the minor subdivision replat application?
One quick thing.
Can you please give us...
Brett Bennett, to comment on the traffic study, you have to read it. Everyone has to read it. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Anessa Malnick, Alpine resident. I guess my question is, sounds like a really random question, but how are you going to share no cars, ATVs, or anything drive on these playgrounds? If you live anywhere near this area, you know that they're going everywhere. So, that needs another safety issue that's going to be brought up.
Well, I know. But, I mean, it happened, I mean...
It's awesome.
Any other public comments?
I have a question that's not about that, but I don't know where else to ask this. I'm just curious, Andrew, who, I'm just, this is total curiosity, who owns the 4H land?
University of Idaho.
Oh, interesting. Okay, that was just curiosity.
Any other public comments? All right, hearing none. Any comments from town council? This would be your time to voice any concerns or any questions regarding this application?
I'll start. That's okay. I think, I kind of go back to, because I feel like it's twofold. I'll make a different comment under the special use permit. But as far as replating, I think I have a difficulty with several points. One, we paid $200,000 for a master plan. For me to do this before that is finished is a travesty, not because I don't want to see things progress, but I think I also take issue with the fact that Sherbo started surveying, and it wasn't approved by the council. And I don't want to speak out of turn, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But again, we're giving private companies approval to go on public lands to survey for something that the town hadn't approved as of the date that I think the surveying began. So, for me, I think all of those points together are what make it very, very difficult to vote in favor of a replating, especially in the fact that we're replating a small chunk for the skate park, and a chunk for this, and a chunk for that, without hearing from Cushing Terrell what the overall plan is for Alpine. So, that's where my stance is in this respect, and then I'll discuss the other points.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other comments from town council? Mr. Larson, just wanted to give you a chance, if you had anything to say?
Thank you, I'm good.
Okay. Hearing no more comments, we'll go to vote. All those in favor of approving the town of Alpine's minor subdivision replat application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, hearing, motion carries, four to one, with one dissenter. All right, moving on to the special use permit for the Alpine Education Foundation. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the special use permit by the Alpine Education Foundation.
We have a motion. Did you want to consider...
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Reading, yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the Alpine Education Foundation's special use permit to construct modular classroom structures that were previously permitted in Teton County, Wyoming, with a non-conforming roof overhang.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Discussion. This would be the opportunity for the public to come up, and again, the same rules, three minutes. Go ahead, we'll have the timer up there. Does anyone have any comments?
I'm just wondering if there will be an inspection, as an educator, I have concerns about the safety of the modular, so if they're installed, will there be an inspection, like, for mold and that kind of stuff?
I'll try to answer your question as well as I can. Through the building permit process, we have our own building official. There's a state inspection that has to happen since it's a school. All the plans are looked at, there's a plan review, and then throughout the whole construction process, our building official and the state officials are involved. I can't speak to mold mitigation, whatever, someone else has to speak to that, I don't know. Is that the only other question you have?
That's it, just as there an inspection process?
Yeah, so, many inspections will happen from the town of Alpine and the state, since it's on our property and it's a school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Meredith Leonard, Alpine Education Foundation. Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of the considerations that were brought up regarding the curriculum of the school. This school is a classical curriculum, it's open to everybody, it does not discriminate against race, sex, creed, any of that. It's based on our founding principles of our country, which is equality and freedom, and the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Regarding the trade school, trade schools are great, but they also create cogs and machine. Our goal as the Alpine Education Foundation is to produce well-rounded citizens that will give back to our community. They can go to this school and become tradesmen's, they can become lawyers, they can become mothers, they can become fathers, all things that build our society, are the building blocks of our community.
Thank you. All right.
Megan Ramsey. So, are you saying that the school's not going to prepare kids for secondary education? Is that what I was to take from that? I just wanted to read if we're talking about the curriculum, we'll go back to that. So, basically, Hillsdale relies on a curriculum called 1776. They are working with the Trump Organization, which is also has a 1776 committee. There's actually a bipartisan group who are watching Hillsdale right now, right now, even with what's going on in the United States, because of the questionable activity that surrounded the school for some time. So, Hillsdale 1776 curriculum offers a slanted, overtly... So Hillsdale seventeen seventy-six curriculum offers a slanted, overtly Christian nationalistic view of America that omitter rewrites history to fit the highly politicized far-right idea. It is authored for and intended as a tool to advance Project Twenty Twenty-Five. It violates the Establishment Clause, if any of you know what that is, in promoting Christian nationalism, was created specifically to discredit the sixteen nineteen project. It limits teachers' ability to present diverse perspectives. It is indoctrination, pure and simple, which is funny because the other side claims that the other side is indoctrinating. But the thing is, we just need to take the politics out of school. We need to educate kids, yes, so they grow up to be well-rounded individuals who do not install and dictate their doctrine to their fellow men. So if you don't understand what that means and you don't understand the Constitution, you probably shouldn't be installing a patriotic school that promises liberty and justice for all. And I won't be putting my hand on my heart saying the Pledge of Allegiance until that matters to every single person. The other thing is, you haven't engaged a single Latino family. And there are Latino families and there are kids that need you, and you haven't spoken to special education, you haven't spoken to IEPs. I don't even know if you know what that is, it looks like you're questioning. So there are some very, very important things, but basically, this is an objective to dismantle public education as we know it, and you just said one of the dog whistles, which is that cog's in the wheel. So you think a vocational tech school, like learning to be a plumber or an electrician or having, you know, some kind of skill set like that? The thing is, the chances are of these kids even staying in Wyoming because they can't afford to be here because we were supposed to be a standalone community a long time ago, not one more car on the road, Jeremy Larson. And we're not.
You have-
We failed. And I've also heard chatter that there's some financial incentive to be had here, and because of this new special use applicant, other people are getting ideas that they might want to build some apartments with some commercial space or maybe do some other things-
You have ten seconds.
...to make some money because of the change in this. And let's not forget that this school is still under the air path of the airpark.
Thank you.
What does that mean and why? And who wants to control this land grab?
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Go ahead.
All right. My name's Luke Astle, I'm a resident of Alpine, also a member of the foundation, trying to bring the school here to Alpine. I, I'd say this wasn't a role in the Alpine Education Foundation that I actively was seeking out. However, I felt the need to join and support this for a number of different reasons, and I just want to make that clear to everyone in the audience and listening at home. One of the things that I've found the most admirable and desirable about this town, and I think that draws people to this community, is just the fact that it is a community and how we all work together, come together, whether that's the top of the Rockies or helping a neighbor out, whatever it might be, you know, it's a, it's a sense of community and giving back. And I think that there's some concerns just overall with what the future of Alpine looks like, and I, I know in prior meetings that we've had conversations about how Alpine's shaping up to be a different community with this school. However, I feel that it will look a lot different without the school. With a school, we'll have, you know, more families drawn to live here, and I'm sure realtors, one of the first questions, and Shay, you may be able to speak to this, is like, is there a school? That's probably the first question that you get from a lot of families looking to live and move to the area. And so I think that that's a, a point that was also brought up in the Cushing and Terrell survey was that, at that point in time, fifty percent of the residents that were surveyed that were wanting a school would reconsider moving somewhere because there isn't a school. And if you compound that over the time of Alpine's existence, I think Alpine would look a lot different. And without this school, we're going to become a town of Airbnbs and vacation rentals, and we're going to lose that charm and that sense of community that we've got because people will continue to look elsewhere for a home where they can raise their family. So I also have a, you know, my, my, my investment into this is that I've got a daughter, she's one and a half years old. I want her to be able to grow up in a community that, you know, I see today and the value that that brings. Couple other things, you know, there's a lot of question about the building and the site and the permanent impact this is, this is a temporary lease. It's to give Alpine a, a start to a school and an opportunity. So, you know, with that said, I think we'll leave the site, I know we'll leave the site in a better condition than what it is today. For whatever the master plan brings, it'll be an asset to the town at no cost, to the town. We're re-diverting some of those tax dollars that go to Afton and other communities into our town. You guys are already paying those taxes, so let's bring that value to our town. And then finally, one of the things that we were discussing just about the mascot, it's something that we came up with about too, we haven't made a final decision on this, but we were kicking around the idea of having the kids pick what that mascot would be. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any other public comment on the, the special use permit? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dominique Bro, I'm a resident of Alpine, I'm also on the Alpine Education Foundation. And I just wanted to bring a little perspective about the master plan, I'm not sure if it really should be addressed with this part or with the previous subdivision, but in a previous position, I was working for the Bridger Teton and I was leading the master, or excuse me, the forest plan revision, which is equivalent to the forest's master plan. And it's a years-long process, and during that time, you don't pause, you just can't pause on things, you have to continue projects. And so when I think of waiting for this other master plan to be done, to decide on things about the school, it just, that just, it just doesn't feel like that's going to actually be congruous. And one other thing I want to say is that master plans are just guides, just because it's in the master plan and we've thought about it, doesn't mean it's actually even going to come to fruition where we think it will, when we think it will. So I just wanted to bring that perspective too. And then just also wanted to say, I have two kids, they go to school in Etna and Thane, and yeah, they are great schools, I love it, but my kids wake up crying because we have to get on the bus so early and it's super hard. So I just wanted to bring that perspective as a parent, that it's really, really not easy to have a school so far away. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, any other public comments on the special use permit?
I got a couple, actually.
Hi Troy.
So, I mean, it was just mentioned a minute ago about what would Alpine look, what does Alpine look like without a school? Well, we've been here for fifty years, you know, I mean, a lot of people move here regardless of school. I, my kids went to Afton, Alp- or Tha- Etna and Thane also, they got busted. I think it breeds a lot of good qualities in a kid, that they have to get up early, they have to ride a bus, whatever. It, it's good for a kid, actually, I mean, it teaches a lot of things, teaches discipline on the bus, you know? The other thing is, you know, there's just a lot of things that are unanswered on this. I haven't seen a cost breakdown on what it's going to cost me as a taxpayer. You guys, everybody says, oh, we're going to divert funds from this place or that place. Well, it's still going to cost, what's it going to cost besides the land? And then also, if it fails, who gets the land, who, who has the land? The leaseholder still?
Yeah.
Do they get to keep the land?
No.
I mean, is it written there like that? I mean, you know, after all they put into it, do they get their money back?
No.
I mean, so, that's what we save quick, doesn't mean a lawsuit doesn't change it, you know? So, all I'm saying is, I don't think it should be voted on in one meeting, approved, I think there should be meetings and let the public know about what costs are, what's going to happen, what's do, what's this? Skate parks were supposed to be bigger, you know, all this other stuff isn't going to happen. But, I mean, like I say, I would like a school, I'd like it done right, but it doesn't hurt kids to ride a bus.
Appreciate it, thanks Troy. All right, any other public comments?
Yep, I wasn't going to say anything, I'm going to say something again. Justin Scott, town of Alpine resident. I just wonder if this is the first special use permit that's been voted on in the town of Alpine with the regulations of what's going in? And I would just say, be cautious that another special use permit doesn't come your way, that you approve and vote on, and then our town goes to houses without foundations. And then what kind of town are we there? So I would say just be careful about this vote and the precedent that you are setting and the Plan and Z, P and Z are setting with this special use permit. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. We'll move on to any comments from Town Council members. Go ahead and take the floor.
Okay. I, I want to start off by saying, I, I think the hardest part for me in all of this is the division that this has caused in our town. I think it's, it's a travesty that this energy wasn't focused on the Lincoln County School District Two to make Etna K through six, and we would have had our kids seven years, ten minutes from our front door. We would have had busing, we would have had lunchrooms, we would have had special needs, all of that would have been covered. So I do want to start with that, that I wish this could have been the energy when our education founding, or not, I guess our Alpine Education Committee went to the district and begged for this and we were dismissed. So I want to start with that. Secondly, I want to be very clear that my perspective on this isn't about the value of education itself, but about fiscal responsibility. Every decision we make here impacts the taxpayers of our community. Supporting this charter school project and the way it's structured will mean additional costs in the form of an additional hundred and forty-eight thousand per year on top of the seventeen thousand average daily membership, ship ADM. So I guess I want to put that in perspective. I would, I, please, take ADM all day long. It's yours, it's your child, that money should follow them. I have an online school child, I get kind of bummed that I don't get anything. They take my seventeen thousand, it is what it is. But what I do have an issue with is the hundred and forty-eight thousand a year that the foundation will receive in lease payments, and it's not to the dollar, but that cost falls, falls directly on our residents, something that's been brought up tonight. So I believe we need to look closely at the financial impact before moving forward. My responsibility as a council member is to safeguard taxpayer dollars and ensure we're not increasing burdens unnecessarily. I do find the dollar per year with a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars per year in lease monies disproportionate. And that is a, that's data I did receive from the State Construction Department, this wasn't data that I just pulled out of a hat. That is the biggest part, portion for me. I fight for half the property tax for people to afford to live here. I fight for things that I feel make a difference. And it does hurt my heart because, yes, I would have loved my children to have a school locally. But I think it is, as was mentioned earlier, the very first meeting when we were a committee, we were told there was ten million dollars. Ten million dollars. And we were told this was coming, this was coming, that was gone. And then the charter had private land under contract, and I was giddy because I thought, then they have something at their disposal, sixteen acres to grow into long-term. Why spend all this money on temporary land when there could be land for generations right off the highway? So for me, that's, that's the difficulty, and I go back and forth because my heart does ache for parents. And I lived through it and I still do, but I think we just are kind of going a direction that doesn't have enough process in place. And I know you're exhausted by process, but I, you know, I said it earlier, I wanted this spread out over a couple meetings, and we are just boom, 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 pushing this through. So this is a difficult vote for me, it's uncomfortable, but at the end of the day, it's what I believe in, and when the public does reach out to me, these are some of the dynamics that pop up. So it is costing, it is costing taxpayers additional funds. Yeah.
Or, or asking questions.
Please come up to the microphone, I'll allow some interaction, I just don't want to get too out of control.
Sure.
But if you have a question, you should address it to them.
Yeah.
So Meredith Leonard, Education Foundation. So our ADM money is set by the state?
Absolutely.
So can you reconcile the extra hundred and forty-eight thousand to the town?
That's true, it's payment.
Right, but that's included in that ADM that we get from the state?
That's separate, it's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I confirm that with the State Construction Department.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it's based off of square footage, enrollment, the, the age of the child, that sort of thing, all those things are factors in this great big calculation, I've spoken with them on the phone too.
Yeah.
I guess where I'm getting a little bit of disconnect is this, this cost to the town of this hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, I think you're viewing that as like-
Not to the town.
But to the residents, is that what you're saying?
And I'm going to say this, I want to make it very clear, the state of Wyoming taxpayers, so this is not, I don't want any misinformation, I am not saying Alpine residents will be paying more tax. What I am saying is they are taking money from public funds across the entire state of Wyoming, and they are putting it in buckets to charter schools. So that is extra funds.
Yeah, and they, they budget on a biannual basis, so it'll be for two years, then they'll revisit that and we'll see, you know, what the budget is for that next year and-
Yeah.
It'll all be based on square footage, enrollment and all those things. I guess I just wanted to clarify that it's not, you know, while the town's getting the lease, there's no actual cost to the town for that, aside from the general population's tax dollars and how those dollars get ultimately budgeted and decided on through the legislation of the government of the state of Wyoming.
Well, and I'll say this, one of the hard parts for me and why, and this isn't, you know, where we're at is, I know you need that money to run the school. The hard part is, a dollar a year, even if we got fourteen thousand a year, that would offset the water and sewer usage, that would offset things that are, um-
Will we, will we not be paying for that though?
They would be paying, they're going to pay all the hookups.
No, 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 I'm saying the fourteen thousand a year would offset the use of our, our water and sewer. I know they're paying for connections, but I'm saying, over time, we're in debt three million dollars.
Right.
You know, there's things like that where I felt like that would help our line item budget.
And what's the alternative, though? The, the property stays vacant and it's still, I guess, one dollar less than an undeveloped property, though?
I think it's just public use land, a lot of people walk on that land.
Dave Jenkins, I just want to just kind of reiterate.
Yeah.
Lincoln County Number Two gets fifty million dollars plus a year, okay? That goes, and none of that money before this is going to Alpine. So now, guess what we're going to have? We're going to have jobs in Alpine, we're going to have money from the, our taxpayer money coming into our town, creating a community for our residents. And, trust me, this is not an easy task to take on, this is the beginning of, hopefully, the future of something bigger, but we have to get started. Charter schools are one of the hardest things you'll ever get off the ground, and I've worked two and a half years, and yes, I was on those meetings and I voted to get K through six on the district school board. This is a huge undertaking to get to this point, and, I mean, there's not, everything's perfect, we've, you know, we're, we're trying to do what's best for this community, what's best for the kids. And it's been a process, I've worked, I mean, we've all worked a lot of hours on this, but we're bringing jobs, we're bringing taxpayer dollars to this community, to Alpine. If we don't do this, all of this money goes to, down the valley. So, I mean, I'm happy about that.
Thanks, Dave. No, any, any other comments or questions that you have before I move on?
No, I think that, I mean, that, that pretty much covers it.
You're good on the-
Yeah.
-special use permit, okay. Any other Town Council questions, comments? Mr. Larson? We've already made all the public comments.
Well, but they brought up your choose.
He just was responding to that.
But all, we have five.
Hold on a second, Mr. Larson, do you have something?
Uh, yes. I just, I just want to say that, you know, it has been a long process, I mean, we've been doing this now, I believe, two years. And I just want those who are opposed to this to know that, talking with, all around, we are listening, we are reading every comment, every email, and taking into account, you know, what's going on, trying to do this in the best way we know how. With that said, I, I personally, you know, I, I love opposition, you know, that's how, I, I don't like group think, I love opposition, you know, tell me what, what's going on, but don't just tell me what's wrong with something. I, I would ask for this, be it this project or any future project, is, is bring solutions. Like if, for this project, if you don't like the charter, what charters do you like and why? You know, what, what are we missing in the form of solutions? That's what I know myself, and, and I know the board always looks towards because that's, it's easy to complain, it's very easy to complain. But it's much harder to come up with solutions. And I would just ask that those in- And I would just ask that, um, those in opposition and those four, you know, keep going for the solutions, and, and we'll try and make the best of it.
And I want to make it very clear. I've always been a part of the solution. Like, I volunteered for the education committee. I think that's the difficulty, is this isn't a complaining of, I just go back to my opening statement. Lincoln County School District Two owes your families Aetna K through six. They owe you busing, they owe you a lunchroom, they owe you gym time. Those are the things we keep kind of pushing to the side, and I know you're too far down in the process, but that's the part that breaks my heart, is that we had a solution. We had it this close, and we just needed public input to push the district to respond to our solution.
Yeah. I, I was, I was there for those meetings, and they shot it down, didn't even give us an option to discuss it. And it was shot down with a single motion within two minutes of, of public comment being over.
And I hope people come out and vote for your school board member because if that tide turns, I think that option-
Totally. And, and I think that's a viable option that still is out there and still a possibility that as town of Alpine residents, we should be going after. That doesn't, this charter school does not mean that we should not be pushing for that because that would be best for all of the school district, in my opinion. So, great point, we need to keep pushing for that. Um, you can please respond, please. I want, I want to hear.
So, thank you. I'm going to respectfully push back on what Mr. Larson just said because I was part of the original committee, and we asked if we could do something besides APA, and we were told, no. We were told it's APA or nothing. So don't act like this, I mean, that, that is very offensive to me. Um, so I, I feel like going forward, if we're going to go with Hillsdale, like, y'all have to be open to us pushing back. You had, have five or six educators here that would have killed to stay in Alpine and not make the commute to Jackson. You must ask yourselves, if you're saying you're not, you're not in the group think, why is that? Why are five or six, five or six dedicated, highly sought-after educators with over a hundred years of experience collectively saying, hell, no, I will not work for this school? You should be asking yourselves that question. And again, I really respect your energy and passion, it's very admirable. I just would like, yeah, just ask that question.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments for town council? Any questions? Okay, we're going to move to a vote.
Can I just take one?
No, thank you, we've, we've heard. Um, okay, at this point, the motion on the table is to approve the Alpine Education Foundation's special use permit to construct modular classroom structures that were previously permitted in Teton County, Wyoming with a non-conforming roof overhang. All those in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Um, motion carries. Um, four to one. We have one more quick, um, piece of business, and then I'm going to take a recess. So we, part of this process is to, um, look at the elevations and essentially just accept them. Madam Clerk, what is the purpose of this next? It says proposed drawings.
Let me read it. Um, in section thirty-one of the executed lease, it sets forth condition precedents that must be satisfied before the lease becomes fully effective. Um, and so one of those items is tenant submits proposed drawings and elevations of all structures for review and approval by the landlord, the landlord being the town council.
Okay.
This is their submittal.
All right, so a simple motion maybe to, uh, accept the drawings and elevations from the Alpine Education Foundation.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Has everyone had a chance on town council to look at these? Um, those are the interior and exterior, and then keep going down, Sarah. Isn't there elevations? Okay, that's the site plan.
There is a map.
Yeah, I think there's-
Somewhere.
That's the plat map. Here's the elevation, okay. Can you zoom out just a little bit? Thank you. All right, so we've got the elevations here, these are, um, it kind of shows the elevations from one end, and then also where they're being put together. South elevation, north elevation, okay. Um, keep going down. Okay, and these, if I'm not mistaken, are the original elevations provided by the company when Teton County, or the company in Teton County purchased them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I think, I think we see that there are elevations, and you've provided that. If that's one of the conditions, then, um, I think, uh, yeah, any, any comments? All right, uh, all those in favor of said motion approving the drawings and elevations for the Alpine Education Foundation, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, uh, four to one, the motion carries. I will now take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
I do.
Hey, Dave, yeah, stick around? All right. Keep me posted on that mascot.
Yep.
Do you know?
Well, I'm not going to tire.
Alpine Tire.
No one's got one.
She's really, she's probably like-
She hired rocks over her.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's like these five layers.
Oh, right.
I think they give someone-
Yeah, I mean, it's sending a message.
What if it's like?
Thank you, hi.
I'm so happy.
I just love that.
I like the numbers.
I'm sure.
Oh, God.
Haley wants to go.
I'm ready.
Oh.
Rewind. No. Unwind.
Oh.
That's almost nine.
All right.
Bye.
I'm running.
I see the last one.
I say, oh, my fingers.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, right, like, it was love. So, I, I, I got this over there. I'm not sure. I dig my touches.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it was great. The town, like, I don't know, I don't know.
Did they give some money?
I was a little grand, I have, I have a nice.
I saw that, like, I didn't appreciate it, it was part of the tourism.
No, I was just, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't, I can't, it was great. I can't help it. They had like five acts, or three. And they, the stage was actually, when we walked in.
They're going over.
Yes, yes.
So the stage was actually right by the entrance.
It wasn't on the big stage, but it's right by the entrance.
It says, for five.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's a day out, I was like, man.
That's mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, yes. See, guys, it's my Friday night.
Which is great, that's perfect.
That's a real significant.
Oh, yeah.
You're a dog.
Security, what's that?
The thing that, the English.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah, the camping.
The campsite had, and that's an indecentated campsite, like, stayed down.
And it looked like you were nestled in a tree.
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, yeah. Definitely. Oh, yeah. I know, so it'd be great, like, just to see this, because we stayed back, it's like, it's a tribal season, we're up front, we're still, just kind of back, just to see, like, the crowd, the fans, the air, the lights. And, I just-
Yeah.
Do that one.
Yeah.
Do the upstream.
I mean, it's like, I would love to be in school. And just have all these.
I'd love to go.
People are in the chat.
They're like, I want to be with them.
Yeah.
And I'm really concerned.
It's a good place.
Yeah.
Three months, something like that.
Yeah, he fulfilled some of his term. Uh, thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in pay, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four one, appointing Rob LaPierre to the Town of Alpine Design Review Committee to fill vacant terms, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Rob. Next is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four two. Um, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four two, ratifying Mayor Green's decision to appoint Councilmember Jeremy Larson to the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee effective September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been a seconded discussion. Um, I would think that, uh, Councilmember Larson would recuse himself on this vote, but I will tell you the reason why. Um, I'm appointing to him to this is, this is a committee that was, um, by law put together two years ago. Um, Councilmember Castillo did serve on that and we needed, um, someone to fill her vacancy. Um, currently there's, um, Councilmember Burchard, myself, and Monica Chenault are on the committee. It's a four-person committee. We had to do this because of open meeting laws and you can't have three town council members, um, at a meeting like this. But over the past two years, it has, this committee has helped so much in, um, employment issues, just being able to talk through things. Of course, it's written into law that, um, everyone at the Town of Alpine works, um, at the pleasure of the mayor. To me, that's kind of, I, I want to, you know, get other people's feedback on decisions that are made, and that's what we've done throughout this whole process, um, having this committee. So, uh, to me, it's, it's very important. Um, so that's kind of my two cents. Anyone have any other comments or questions?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to comment. Um, Council and Mayor, I'd like to speak tonight about transparency, fairness, and adherence to law. First, under Wyoming's Public Meetings Act, whenever a quorum of council members meets to discuss town business, that must be noticed and open to the public, as the mayor just no, uh, noted. When appointee Councilman Jeremy Larson met with members of the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee on Monday, September eighth at nine AM, I had come by the town office and saw all the cars. This took place before this resolution ever came to this council. That crossed into a quorum dynamic and seems to violate the spirit of open meeting law, even if the mayor had made a prior appointment. Decisions should not be shaped behind closed doors. Second, regarding resolution two zero two five dash zero four two, ratifying Councilmember Larson's appointment to the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee effective September fourth, this appointment was not discussed at our regular meeting two days earlier on our September second town council meeting. And I would like to see any correspondence noting that this took place actually on September fourth. As it appears, the committee began meeting before said resolution we are voting on tonight ever passed, which again is troublesome. Under Wyoming statutes fifteen dash two dash one zero two and fifteen dash three dash two zero four, the governing body determines how members are appointed. And in many cases, the mayor must have council consent. If our ordinance requires a resolution, then allowing meetings to begin before a council vote is approved does not seem valid procedure. If Councilmember Larson's appointment was voted down this evening, that confirms he was never legally a member of the committee. This probably goes to you. Um, that means any committee meetings that took place with him acting as a member over the last few weeks are not valid and should be treated as null and void. To protect this council and the town, any work done in those meetings should be redone properly with lawfully appointed members. I also need to point out that we already have Mayor Green, Councilwoman Burchard, and Clerk Monica Chenault serving on this committee. I think after Emily Castillo's resignation, adding another council member would put nearly the entire council inside one committee. That not only risks quorum violations, it blurs the line between oversight and operations. Committees should be balanced, not overloaded with council representation. I would like to know if Councilman Weirda was ever considered for this appointment, as I was never approached either. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that my name be added for consideration to the Employee Policy and Procedure, Procedure Committee. Or I would like to have a vote that the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee remain two council members and the clerk for public optics. Any action taken without proper authority is no action at all. This council must lead by example, by following the law, respecting process, and ensuring transparency for the people we serve.
Thank you for your, uh, comments. Just so you know, the meeting that you came in on
Yeah.
was an interview of Councilmember Larson.
But it says September fourth he was appointed.
That's what the motion says that you would be voting on, yes.
Okay, but he was being interviewed on the eighth.
Right. If you would like to make a motion to, um, change the, the motion.
Okay, well, I'd like Mr. Sanderson to let me know, are you allowed to have meetings prior to a vote of a resolution if it's just done by appointment?
Well, it depends on the kind of meeting, I guess. This is the thing is, is, um, I would like a brief from all parties involved here, and maybe we should set this to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Um, I, I think there's bits and pieces that, uh, you're asking me to make.
I know.
A call on when I don't have all the facts.
I'm totally fine with that.
Okay.
We have, uh.
Could we table it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if that's what you would like to see, um, you can also rescind the motion and we can discuss it.
And this is nothing, it's not personal against Councilman Larson. I think it's the process that's in place. Like, I wasn't asked if I wanted to be on it. I don't know if Councilwoman Weirda was. So I guess I just feel like, I would like that as an open meeting discussion, especially something.
It's, it's regarding employee. So we don't have to have an open meeting.
Oh, no, no, not an open meeting that all council persons would have been asked, would you like to join it?
I would, I would.
Okay.
I'm totally fine if you would like to interview for that position. But you're also saying you want it to be two people.
That's kind of what, I mean, I'm, I'll be honest at the end. I was making my motion to add myself to it, but really, I kind of had a secondary. I don't like three council people, I think, on a committee. I think that just kind of tips the scale. I don't think, because it's a committee, it wouldn't be breaking quorum, but I think it just, it enters territory where I feel like if a quorum group is meeting to discuss these things, it just makes me a little more uncomfortable.
My recommendation to you would be to make, in a future meeting, if you would like to change that, to make a, a motion to rescind whatever, or a new, write a new resolution, or whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Ask staff to write a resolution for you.
Okay.
Whatever you would like, and then you can bring it and put it on the agenda. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And then we can discuss it there. I'm fine, um, tabling it now or, um, rescinding it. Um, it's, it's kind of up to you. You made the motion.
Um, I can rescind the motion. Withdraw. I would like to withdraw my motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four two, ratifying Mayor Green's decision to appoint Councilmember Jeremy Larson to the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee effective September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. It's been, been rescinded, or, uh,
Withdraw.
We need to take a vote?
You don't have to take.
Right.
Oh, we don't, 'cause she's withdrawing.
Okay, withdrawn. So, okay, so we'll move on. Thank you for that discussion. Now, what else do we have? Oh, HK Contractors. Um, looks like we have a bid from HK. Do we have a motion? If we get it on the table, then I'll bring everyone up to date with what this is.
Uh, motion to approve HK Contractors, Inc., Waste Facility Approach Bid.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded discussion. Um, so this was brought to light, um, in the, the staff, uh, our guys down at the, um, wastewater treatment plant in the new pretreatment plant, that if we don't, um, we have a concrete pad that kind of surrounds it. And I can't remember exactly how much it might say on here. Um, how much? But the, the maintenance staff has said that if we don't do this, we're gonna have a muddy mess. And, um, there's actually like a drop-off currently from the concrete to the gravel. So their recommendation is to have HK do this work. And, um, I wish one of the maintenance guys were here. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you know more about this and what they're recommending?
Um, they're, they're just providing a ramp up into the new pretreatment facility. I believe it's to accommodate the dumpsters for the trash. There, there's a dumpster. I, I don't.
There was a dumpster.
There's a dumpster involved, maybe with the, what, with that new piece of equipment supposed to take all the water out of the sewage.
Oh, right, right.
So, I, I believe. However, I, I will tell you, this is probably a temporary fix. At, at some po, but it probably the most cost-effective, easiest way to fix the current problem. But in truth, in long-term, I think the suggestion will probably be to concrete it, and there's probably paving that needs to be done at the treatment plant as well, but with the current budget situ- situation.
Yeah, yeah.
We just need to keep it operational.
Yep. And I think, um, I, I didn't recall the, the dumpster conversation.
There was something about a dumpster.
Yeah, maybe it's access to the dumpster and there's a drop-off or something, and they're trying to level all that, and.
I wish Craig was here.
I know, but we, we sent him home 'cause he would already been here.
We trust him. I trust him.
Yeah.
I good enough.
And, and this was brought forth by, um, Dustin and the guys down at the, at the plant. So, um, we do have to trust them. If they think this is better, um, then, uh, for operational sake, then I think we should probably go for it. But that's a decision that we'll make here in a second. Any other questions regarding this? Okay, all those in favor of, um, the motion to approve HK Contractors Waste Facility Approach Bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Um, motion carries. All right, we'll move right into general comment. It looks like we have a few people that stayed to the end. Again, always three minutes, and then, um, yeah, then we'll get out of here. Please state your name.
Patricia McQuade, um, resident of Alpine. And, um, I waited till now because I knew that the votes on the replat and the special permit were a done deal. I'm sorry that the, uh, school people left, but I, there are some things I, I want to be on the record. People who have questioned, have qualms about this particular project are not against a school in Alpine. When the whole thing started, um, and I, I'm here almost every meeting, I sat and listened to Mr. Funk talk and say how there was public money, or private money. There was private money to take care of all of this. Um, on March eighteenth at the town council meeting, the charter board or charter group, I don't know the, um, the distinction, uh, gave a present, presentation asking for a lease that they needed right away so they could get a loan so that they could buy the trailers. So, the, you know, the, the lease was granted to them. Uh, there are, um, you know, conditions of precedent, but also their, their, um, their presentation, they had financial assumptions. They had lease payment enrollment assumptions. They had estimated student enrollment, and down here, it's assumptions of what percentage of students would be going to the school. The conditions of precedent, number one, was a business plan, including financials and sources of financing. What, um, when I talked to Monica Thursday afternoon, that has not been submitted. Their timeline that they submitted, uh, an enrollment study was, was going to be done this summer, the summer of twenty-five. We're at September eighteenth, so the summer's about over. And I don't think an enrollment study has been, uh, forwarded to, uh, to the council. It also has, um, moved the modulators, which moved the modulators onto the town property for the summer of twenty-six. Now, as I understand it, they're, they want to get those on there before the snow flies this year. So again, we're in a, you know, emergency situation. So, my two concern, major concerns are, is there money? They haven't, you know, submitted a financial plan or the, uh, business thing. Is there enough money to get this project on, you know, done and a school opening next August? Number two, do they have commitments? Commitments from parents of a hundred to a hundred and twenty students that they need minimumly to open that school next year? You know, they talk about, oh, we've talked to people and they're all excited and blah, blah, blah. Are there commitments, you know? So, I know the, uh, conditions precedent. They cannot move those on. They cannot move those trailers onto that property until all of those conditions are met.
That's exactly right.
So we're talking a couple of months, and I'm hoping that we get, you know, a business plan and financials early enough that we can go through them along with enrollment. You know, I don't want another emergency where, oh, we're gonna put these on and, yeah, we'll get those to you. So I'm just saying, um.
Just, okay, and just to be totally clear, um, I don't know what the two months is that you referenced or whatever, but that document.
I understand that they want to get those on there before the snow flies.
Right.
So we're talking a couple of months.
Oh, right, 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 okay. Um, and I, I know that they're working on the business plan and the financial plan. So, and we've received, we've. Yeah, we've received initial of both of them, but I have recommended that they fine-tune it. And, um, then when we receive that, that's one more thing that we're checking off the list. Um, so then the, the lease can be valid, and then, um, after the lease is valid, then they'll go through the building permit process, which they've already applied for. But they're not getting a building permit until that lease is in place.
Effective.
Yep. Thanks, Pat.
And which one of us will be on the foundation board? Have they decided?
No. We.
No, I know, we decide.
Yeah.
I just, we haven't discussed.
If you would like to apply, we'd be more than happy to hear your.
Apply!
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe Anessa wants to be.
Yeah, actually, um, I don't know if this is what I.
Oh, will you turn on the microphone? I, we probably didn't get any of what Pat said. We hit that button so it lights up.
Okay.
Oh, you did? Okay, thanks.
Um, Anessa, I'm like Alpine. I don't know if this, how I go about, how do we, how, how do we go about getting another crosswalk in town?
Where would you like a crosswalk?
South.
Which part? Tell me specifically.
Uh, I don't know specifically, like, somewhere, car wash, or like, somewhere.
Well, it can't be right at the car wash.
No, like the gas station. I'm just curious if that's been brought up for discussion.
We've discussed that length with Wydah about, uh.
Wydah.
And, um, of course, it's so important with the school being here eventually, with the library being here, with the CDC already.
Skate park.
Skate park, all those reasons, and because of the traffic flow, they don't want to stop people from going whatever, thirty, well, they're really going forty-five until they get to right up here where this.
Pizza.
So, yeah, exactly.
Then it's like thirty-five.
Right.
Fish.
But the crosswalk would be where it's forty-five miles an hour. So, it's, they've told me flat out, it is not going to happen. Now, it may take somebody like you complaining. We, I, I've heard from someone else recently that, about crosswalks and all that stuff. So, I did tell them that if you won't do a crosswalk, will you do a tunnel? And they're like, yes, we'll do a tunnel. So personally, I think the master plan needs to say that we need a tunnel right here in this location. And then, once we have it in place, then we can try to figure out the funding. But we also have to extend the crosswalks out. Um, I should also mention that we got a grant for the Safe Streets For All. See, we got a Safe Streets For All grant. And that is, uh, the money was frozen and it's been unfrozen.
Okay.
So, they have to come and do, um, a study, and what is they call the, they do a test, something?
Yeah, we have a construction project in it, so essentially, um, what will happen is the, the consultants that do the, uh, transportation master plan, they will work with town staff and the mayor and council to determine what traffic calming device or situation they will install um, to create traffic friction to, to help with this. Um, and so then they will, through the grant, they will install an example of that, uh, for us as well. And then they will study that while studying the rest of the transportation needs, which in all modes of transportation, so walking, biking.
And that'll be the opportunity for the public to give their point of view and their voice heard.
And that'll come through zip, through here. We'll get messaging about that?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
It, it'll be, it'll be similar.
Change my address.
It'll be very similar to the process that we're doing for the, for the actual comprehensive master plan.
Okay.
Um, the, actually, the, the transportation master plan study is caught, is a three hundred thousand dollar project. And so it's, it's quite a comprehensive project.
Okay.
So, um, then whatever they install will inform the results of the study. So, whatever they decide to do to help with the traffic and to slow down traffic and to make it more safe, that will then inform the study and, and inform the recommendations for how we improve.
Yeah. And once we have the study in place, then we can act on it.
And then, yeah, the federal government does have grants to, to do construction projects to help address some of the problems identified.
Yep.
In the master plan.
We have to identify the problem. One solution.
Crossing a highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Major highway.
Major highway.
Huge.
Are you familiar with like those bumpouts that people do, like where towns do where, um, there's a crosswalk?
Yeah.
Where, so they'll be parking on the side of the roads, and then there's like a bumpout, which is a curbed bumpout with the, like, ADA ramp.
Yes.
So it's much better situation. So that's one idea that's been floated out there as the project to study. And we would likely do that where, like, across from the post office where that major crossing is. So, and study how that benefits or affects the traffic. So, does that answer your question about the crosswalk?
I guess the sort of way, way, yeah.
It's, it's a big hurdle, I will.
Yeah, okay.
Apparently this Wyoming Highway Patrol public complaint or complaint form is quieted.
I, I wrote it.
Yeah, I would look around at them.
I would try that as well.
I, I feel like when people do complain about that, we should have them and give them to people.
We just, we just received it from Wydah the other day, this one. What was that one for?
That was somebody complaining about the lack of ADA access.
Yeah, and speed through town, so it's just, if we get more of those, then they'll, I think.
Okay.
Understand that this is a problem, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay. Megan Ramsey. So we went from a cleary shed red building that we were told would be upgraded by Dave, and now we're back at trailers. And with Jackson Hole Classical Academy, the only reason that those modulators worked was because they already had a gymnasium separate building that's seen in a lot of their photos as a gathering place. So as far as these kids are concerned, they're gonna be splintered off in little boxes all day long, which is probably not good for their well-being. Um, just trying to think about all of this put together and why we're doing this now and why we couldn't just table this very, very important decision and, um, allow town members to contribute. Um, and then on another note, it is absolutely inappropriate that Jeremy Larson is appointed to a committee for employment. He prides himself on being a house husband. I don't know how many quotes I've seen about that. What credential does he possibly have to be overseeing a town that, are you making what, a hundred thousand dollars a year now, Monica? Is that correct? It was eighty or a hundred? I heard that it went up. So that's a pretty big salary for a county clerk disproportionate for a town this size. Are you able to speak to the amount? It should be on the public record.
I am able to speak to you if I so desire.
Okay.
I think that's personal, and I think it's a conversation I don't desire to have.
It's a town, and so salaries should be published. Um, I can go and look up. Okay, great, I'll be watching for that. And then, again, back to the mayor's ask of that health insurance and just the disproportionate ask of that amount that needs to be addressed. As we're looking at all these fiscal matters that are going to affect us, because I don't think this school's gonna be viable, so it's gonna bite us in the proverbial, you know what? And so what are we gonna do and what is the plan to mitigate what happens, not if, but when uh, that doesn't go through? Because they don't have the enrollment. Um, they don't. Um, for a year, I was looking over your documents, um, that were produced in December. And, um, they have never been able to even pledge their own children. I really doubt Melinda Dorian's kids are gonna be going to the school. It, it's a pet project, and all along the way, you know, we have folks who have financial skin in the game, their own financial skin in the game, that is incredibly problematic. And if you go back to a couple days ago on the front page of the Jackson Hole News talking about town council meetings in Driggs and Victor, they basically say, "It is common sense. Anyone should know when to recuse themselves." And I see Amy with her temporary sign, and I wonder if she's just a temporary fixture installed to get the school passed through? It is abhorrent. It is despicable that you would sit there and tell us what to do with our education and look us in the eye behind that table. Um, the both of you, and Jeremy Larson and Frank Dickerson before you. It's terrible. And the thing is, is you see all these people that are very passionate about this. We do have solutions, but you've never asked us, 'cause you have.
They've been asking you for solutions from the beginning.
You have cottage meetings in people's houses. You're at Steve Funk's house.
I don't really.
I have reached out.
Nine thirty-nine. Is there anything else you'd like to add to this?
Yes, I'd like to say that.
Because I'm gonna wrap it up real.
You, you owe a debt of gratitude for these teachers commuting to Jackson, teaching, coming back here and getting spit in the face for a year. And you guys brought a fraudulent organization, APA, and you all knew, you all had ample evidence of the fraud and malfeasance. And you still won't admit it, admit it today, and you change the subject as soon as it comes up because you don't want to go there. And so the thing about this bait and switch, which is an absolute bait and switch, and the Wyoming Charter Board is making this up as they go along, it could be quite legally proven by the WEA or other interested parties. There are so many reasons for lawsuits right now. You need to talk to Mr. Sanderson, and you need to dial all of those things out, and I see you smiling. But what are you going to do to mitigate those damages? And are there any town employees who've been fired for, without cause, who are suing the town right now? So that's, that's a no.
The answers.
Right now, today.
Today, maybe tomorrow you don't know.
Why are, right, and why are you putting our town in such an embroiled situation when we should be having those big meetings like we had last time? When Carolyn Charette, Casey Crelin, and Dave Charette Junior and et al. And Dave harassed teachers in that meeting in a private room and mischaracterized an event that happened from the beginning. And we told you guys who they were, and no one.
And we saw you joking about whatever happened. We saw the video.
It wasn't a joke. That was.
Why were you saying, did you get that on video?
That was fear. I didn't say, did we get that on video? We can watch it again together.
Heather said it to you.
No.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm done with this conversation, so appreciate your.
You've been done with a lot of conversations.
You've had more than three minutes, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to.
I'm glad you were captivated.
Okay, please.
Well, I would like to maybe lighten up the conversation and appreciate everything that's been done here over the last eighteen months. I appreciate the council. I appreciate, uh, Meredith and you, Dave. Thank you for coming. I will no longer be voicing my. I will no longer be voicing my opinion regarding what is taking place because the vote has been taken. So, best of luck to the council and the town property. Best of luck to you in your school. So, that is my first thing. Second thing, thank you so much, Andrea. Thank you so much, Councilman Larson, Councilman Burchard, for bringing Reagan the Rockies to Alpine. Maybe we can get a little bit more love in this community. I don't know if we can. Maybe once we get it past this and the school goes in, it's successful, and we're all jumping for joy, it's great, and we all go do a little something at Reagan the Rockies? You never know? But, thank you very much for all that you do. I know it's been hard, and maybe this kind of settles down the tone a little bit, and because I don't know if rhetoric's going to get us anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to all the meetings you have been coming to, Justin. Breath of fresh air. Do we have any more public comment?
I would just, can I just add?
Oh, my gosh.
I want to make a public apology to Councilmember Weirda. Your name tag was ordered, and I didn't realize until I went to set it out the last time. I'm like, why does she still have paper? It actually was delivered, we never got it. So, we ordered you another one, so you should have it soon. It's been delivered. So, I apologize because it should have been taken care of before now. It's my fault.
Just to clarify, you do have another year. Mr. Larson knows a year, three months, and however many days to serve. So, it's not a temporary. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
14 days, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Feel better, Jeremy?
Okay, good luck on your flight, Amy. Thank you. You're going to make it.